I was ready. Okay, good evening, everyone, on this fine Tuesday evening. I am going to go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Councilmember Bullen.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Eme.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
And Mayor Milawonbey.
Here. And next, we're going to have a public comment. Do we have public comment?
We do. We received no emailed public comment, and we have three people registered to speak, two in person and one virtually. The first to speak in person will be Carla Bailey Smith.
Okay. Let's see.
Do you want to read me those rules?
Yes, 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 yes.
Waiting for it.
Because everybody has to be reminded of the rules, you know? It is the most fun part of the meeting, actually. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. You may proceed.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carla Bailey Smith, and I am here as the Chair of the Central Illinois Chapter of the ACLU. The Bloomington Police Department has been awarded $500,000 from the City of Bloomington's ARPA funds for a Violence Reduction Grant. Our concern is specifically with the proposal to purchase and use drones at an estimated cost of $56,000. Our committee questions the use of surveillance as violence prevention, and there are privacy concerns. The Drone Surveillance Act specifies how a drone may and may not be used in law enforcement situations. The Illinois Drone Surveillance Act 725 ILCS states that a drone may not be used by law enforcement to gather information except in specific cases. These include: to counter a risk of a terror attack based on credible evidence from Homeland Security; after obtaining a search warrant based on probable cause; with reasonable suspicion of imminent harm, escape of suspect, or destruction of evidence; to find missing persons for crime scene and traffic photography; and in a disaster or public health emergency. The ACLU of Illinois is aware of the request to purchase and use drones and would remind the Bloomington Police Department that general surveillance is prohibited. Drones could be present at a public event but not launched and used unless a specific situation arises or there is reasonable suspicion of imminent harm. We hope that you, the Bloomington City Council members, will take this into account before approving the use of these funds for this purpose. If at some point the use of drones is implemented by the Bloomington Police Department, it will be important to have clearly stated protocols and prohibitions for usage established. And I have emailed all of you. You should have received it at six o'clock, although I think I left out Mr. Gleason of my comments and the supporting documents from the ACLU of Illinois. So you have a record of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next.
Next up, we have Serena Fish, and then to follow will be online, Ravi Dury.
Hi, my name is Serena Fish. Myself and one of you, Mr. Jeff here, attended the last PSCRB meeting. So we have a complete idea of what this is. And I would suggest if people want to stir things up, they go to some of our meetings. Come, all the public is always invited. Hold on to your seats because the proposal that you're going to hear tonight is pretty good. And it approaches a lot of things that a lot of you have spoken about concerning violence. And I myself am very prepared and very happy because they are on the ground running. So please listen to the proposal and make your own decision. And like I said, all the PSCRB meetings are public invited. We certainly would like everybody to come when we have a quarterly meeting and get the truth straight from the people who are doing it. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Grable, for being there.
Thank you, Serena. Next.
Last up, I believe Ravi is online to speak remotely.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Ravi Dury. My name is Ravi Dury. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I am calling today regarding the State of Illinois Violence Prevention Grant. We have heard, we have seen the presentation that the Bloomington Police Department gave to the PSCRB. I would like to say it is fantastic that the City of Bloomington has received this grant. I would like to mention, you know, again, call out that it wasn't that long ago last year that several members of this council called for either city staff or for a task force to be put together to study the sources of violence, the root causes of violence within our community. There were some that poo-pooed that idea, and yet here we are where we have this opportunity. And it's a shame that we don't have more developed ideas to do something about it. And I think in speaking to many people in the community, I think we would like to see more programs directed from the city itself addressing these root causes rather than funneling money toward the police for technology, surveillance, and deterrents. Specifically, the idea of mobile camera platforms to monitor gatherings. I've spoken to many people. They feel that that is just an intimidation tactic to potentially discourage rallies and protests. The potential threat of mass facial recognition to identify who is attending these type of gatherings. Similarly, with drones, I believe someone mentioned earlier that is against Illinois law, most of those usage. Furthermore, the use of drones for urban search and rescue is not very effective. That sort of functionality would be much better at the county level. And again, any use of these technology platforms would be better with strong guidelines in place to make sure that they're used responsibly and ethically. But mostly, I think I would like to see, and I think some of the programs, as Ms. Fish mentioned, are good. Some of the, like the camp or some of the gun locker programs. We need more social programs directed at reducing or preventing violence, not necessarily trying to deter or intimidate people. That really does not work. The kind of things to address the reasons people might turn to violence is going to be a much better use of this money. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
We have no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bullen, second.
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Councilmember Urban, and we do want to voice vote, right?
Yes, please. Councilmember Walsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullen.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Eme.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember. I got you. Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I didn't pass this, so no names to announce. And the next item on the agenda is the regular agenda and a presentation of the city's proposed Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan as requested by the Administration Department. And I believe we're going straight to Deputy City Manager Tyus.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, we're actually excited about this presentation by Michael Hurt, who is our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, I always butcher his title. But he's been, he and his team have been working on this document and this plan for quite some time now. Really what it is, and he'll speak more to this, is this document and this plan really guides our efforts at making sure that our facilities, our programs, and our services are accessible to persons with disabilities, to anyone who wants to participate in city-related services and projects and programs. And so Michael and his team have gone around the city facilities. They've looked at our facilities to measure and monitor whether or not they are accessible and meet the requirements of the ADA and other requirements. And so with that, I'll toss to Michael, and he'll take it from there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sorry, good evening, Mayor. Next slide, please. For those individuals who are not familiar with the ADA or the Americans with Disabilities Act, I want to run through just a few slides that contain facts about what we were trying to do here. The purpose of the city's ADA Transition Plan is to demonstrate the city's commitment to promoting the quality of opportunities for all of its residents. This plan will guide the planning and the implementation of necessary policies, programs, facility, and public rights-of-way modifications over the next several years as part of the city's ongoing commitment to the development and the maintenance of policies, programs, and facilities that include all of its residents. Next slide, please. So what does this transition plan do? The main thing this plan will do is to improve and provide access. Access being the key word that resonates throughout this plan. This plan will list the physical barriers that limit accessibility to our programs, activities, and services by individuals with disabilities. The plan puts into action the concerns of, that we've heard from disability advocates, from people in the disabled community. They have a lot of high hopes, and my prayer is that we could rise to the occasion to meet those high hopes. It's different on this side of the table to write a transition plan, but to hear the other side of the table, the people who will benefit from it, is almost life-changing. The plan puts into action those concerns, and it also sets out methods that we will use to remove barriers and make the facilities accessible along with a work schedule of when we will have these items completed. Next slide, please. What is our transition plan and what is in it? The Americans with Disabilities Act is a federal law. So the Act of 1990, 1994, and 2008 all speak of discrimination against people with disabilities is prohibited. Title II specifically speaks to us as a state or a local government and that we fall under the auspices of Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we are required, therefore, to have a transition plan as to how we will guarantee access for our residents. So this plan states that we will not discriminate against individuals who are differently able, but instead we will provide appropriate aids so that differently-abled individuals can participate equally in all of our activities, all of our services that are offered by the city. And while this is something that we are required to do, I wanted to set forth or to apprise you of the spirit by which our office created this plan is that we are happy to do this. It is the right thing to do. Thank you. I want to, well, I'm sure you can recall the original ADA Transition Plan that had been hanging out there for a few years. Really, it was a skeleton of a plan. What we have done is beat it up a little bit. We beat it up a lot, actually. And what I want to do is show you the ADA page that we've created. We call it Access Bloomington. Here on our Access Bloomington page, you will find a grievance form, grievance complaint form. You will also find a link to the ADA Transition Plan. And also, you will find links on the left side of that page to our facilities, and you can see what we have done in terms of self-evaluations. Let's go to the green. The complaint form has been modified. The one that was originally there was four or five pages long. It was way too cumbersome for what it was intended to do. So this is now a one and a half, one and a half-page form. Individuals can submit it to us in whatever way is most comfortable for them. They could submit it online. They can print it out. They can bring it in, or they can mail it in. It does not ask for a lot of information. Basically, once I receive the form, if it's submitted or mailed or however it comes to me, I give that individual a call, and we do an assessment over the phone to see what the situation is. We want to make this as easy as possible for our residents because that was one of the complaints we found out during our public meetings is that, yes, the city does have avenues in place to address complaints, but the problem was it was way too cumbersome for a lot of individuals in our community. So this is our effort to make it as simple as possible. It is our commitment that we get back to the individual. We're trying to do 48 hours is what we plan and get to work on whatever their situation is. And hopefully, it's something within our jurisdiction. If not, we will direct them to the appropriate agency. Let's take a look at some of the site evaluations very quickly. Let's look at City Hall. That is probably the one that is going to have the most in terms of violations. Sorry, don't mean violations. Most of the work that needs to be done in ADA in terms of the elevator, the HVAC system, and things of that nature. So I don't know why that's not showing. But, and also, there is an issue in the parking lot. So these are major issues which we need to look probably beyond one or two years to get done. So right now, we are scheduling, or we are planning to have the renovation amounts included in the FY24 budget for City Hall. Just try another one to see what we got.
And when you say City Hall, you mean on Olive Street, right?
I mean the City Hall building in 109. Yeah.
One of the things while you're looking for that, Michael, that we found that we're working through is that as we've tried to update some of this webpage, some of the updates aren't taking place. So we're working through that to get, make sure that the site is updated with dates and budget numbers as appropriate so that that's there once this is out there publicly, et cetera, et cetera. So no Councilmember Ward had asked a question about that, and we're working through getting those things updated. So that will show up on this page once that's done.
Okay, and those updates and any progress we make in terms of addressing the compliance issues in our facilities, services, or public rights-of-way that will also be available to any resident to bring up on the internet. They can also bring it up on My Bloomington app, and that is another avenue by which they can make a complaint or a concern known to our office. Yeah, and that's pretty much what I have. I'm, will entertain any questions right now.
I'm sorry, Michael, really, really quickly, do you have the highlights page that you'd put together?
I skipped my highlights. That's the best part of this thing.
Would you mind going back to that?
Let's go to the highlights page. As I mentioned, some of the things that we had put into this plan to change it from what it was originally. So this plan is a living document, and as I was saying, residents can monitor the progress themselves to see how we're coming along with these commitments we've made to the community. It designates a person to oversee compliance. My name, my contact information is out there, and I welcome concerns from the residents. Also, it assigns for those who have been calling and didn't know where to lodge their complaint, I provide a resource. So now I'm there as a resource for anyone who needs to speak to a real body as opposed to, as opposed to getting a recording, that is. The transition plan comes with a screen reader. One of the complaints we had was that our website was not compatible with all screen readers that were used by people with visual disabilities. So our website, our webpage, rather, will have a built-in screen reader. So they just click on it, and you've got it going there. Next slide. As we mentioned before, the grievance and appeal procedure has been abbreviated. It was far too long before for it to be effective. We also have multiple options that an individual can use to notify the city of its concerns, being our online portal, by phone, mail or email, or again through the My Bloomington app. One of the great things we found about while doing our assessment was that the majority, the vast majority of our facilities are in compliance with the ADA. So we're looking at somewhere around 1% in terms of work we need to do on non-compliance. Any questions?
Okay, council questions. Councilmember Bullen.
Yeah, I don't really have too many questions. I really appreciate it, and I did notice that our compliance is really pretty good. And I want to thank you for all the work that you've done. Is, in the transition plan printout, could you put a link in that plan document that goes to that page that you showed us?
Yeah, yes, I can.
You can do that, okay? And this is just me being picky. When I read through the plan, pages 13 through 16 read to me as an introduction rather than the real content of the plan itself. Could those pages be put at the top that says, "Look what the city has done. Look who was involved", and then go and item, you know, then go on and say, "This is what we're doing to respond to all of that"?
Certainly take a look at it.
Does that make any sense?
It does.
I'm not, I'm not being critical. I'm just, you know, when reading it, it just, for me, it would make more sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Bullen.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, thank you for your work on this. I know that it's been something that you've been working on and putting a lot of effort into. One of the things that I really appreciate about this document, aside from the fact that it's a living document and that there's room for it to continue to grow, is something that you said at the very beginning of your presentation, and that is that we're doing this not because the law says we have to do it, but we're doing it because it's the right thing to do. And I, I can't emphasize enough how important it is that the, that the city is, is doing this because it's committed to doing the right thing, not because we don't have any choice. Nobody, it, those are, it's just an important distinction.
It absolutely is.
I am curious, though, about something, and I'm sorry that this isn't, isn't where we can, can see, you know, what the outstanding issues are. It makes it a little hard to, to kind of get my head around. But I'm wondering, were there, were there instances in the public comment that you got, the meetings that you went to, the one-on-one kind of conversations that you had, where members of the, the, the community raised issues that aren't part of this plan? And like, where, what, what kind of proportion is there?
Yeah, I think part of that falls under things that we are not required to do, but we want to do. One of the complaints or the concerns is that when someone who is visually impaired comes into the government center, they don't know which floor they get in. they don't know which floor they're getting off on sometimes. If you miss a ding uh by the bell, you're getting off on the wrong floor. So what we plan to do is uh install a voice in there that will tell you which floor you're on. It, it was just, just simple things like that that make life so much better for people. And also when you come into a building, uh, they were asking for directional signage, which makes perfect sense for anyone, whether you're disabled or not. You walk into a building, you don't really know where to go. So we're going to update the signage in our, our public facilities also.
I would add to that in elevators, when there are all these signs saying, you know, to pay your taxes, go here. How would somebody who, who is visually impaired be able to, to follow that? And, and so I just, it, it's stuff like that, that I'm, I'm kind of wondering, are, are those being addressed and, and yeah?
Yeah, actually you can program um the elevator voice to sound like, you know, one of those department stores back in the fifties. Uh, mezzanine, taxes. There, the technology is, is there. So we really want to use it um to make these uh trips to the government center and some of our other buildings uh a lot easier uh for both uh communities disabled and those are non-disabled.
What were the barriers to, to addressing concerns that, that the community might have raised that we're not going to do?
Uh, some of, well, I don't know if it were, were barriers. I know a lot of the uh problems we were having uh involve manpower to get some of it done. The city is experiencing the same uh manpower issues as is the rest of the country. That's part of it. Uh, another part of it that we're having right now is um if we can get the correct intergovernmental agreements and allow us to do what we need to do, that would help.
Wait, can you say more about that second one?
Uh, I'm not really sure what the intergovernment agreement is between the city and county where this building is concerned.
And then I don't know if Councilman Crable was gonna address the question that, that you had raised regarding. Yeah, which question was that? You've got some other questions, so I'm gonna, I'll shut up and, and let you sit down then. Thank you.
Did you have questions here?
Yeah, just, just to be sure, we only have four minutes left. I'm gonna hold us to that, four minutes.
All right. Uh, uh, Michael, thank you so much for uh putting all the time in. What I really appreciate is getting all the community uh involvement. And um with regard to the grievance procedure, if somebody says, hey, I can't do, I can't fill it out, can they make a grievance with you verbally?
Absolutely.
Okay. I noticed there's discrepancy in the plan. I think it says fifteen days for a response. And then in um, in the grievance uh procedure online, I think it still says thirty. So I saw a discrepancy there. Um, so far, how many people have contacted you to um say, make a grievance or report, report an issue? Just in, not in meeting with people, but just your daily.
I can recall in the last couple of months, three people.
Okay.
And I think part of the problem is we don't really have our name out there yet and they don't really know what we do. So we are undertaking efforts to sort of raise awareness of our office in the city.
Okay. Um, who participated in the facility reviews?
The uh facility reviews, um, the original document went out to the department directors and they assigned a staff member to do it.
Okay, so like um, like City Hall, who would have been the staff members? Not who who, but what position would they have been?
Uh, someone in human resources did the staff review for City Hall.
Okay, I mean, so.
Was there a question about the complexity of the review?
Well, how many of the people that were reviewed had ADA training?
Probably none of them and it, it really isn't necessary. The review is written to be uh user-friendly. It can be completed with a tape measure and a um uh door pressure uh pen.
Okay. Um, yeah, I don't know if I agree with that. Um, uh, just I know that uh Normal did it a little bit differently and I just wonder if, if the minimal amount of um problems that we saw is based on maybe not having people trained in the ADA to um, you know, review that. And, and so um, I know this is a living document, so those things can be redone eventually if, if necessary. Did anybody from Lysol Mark first go into or were part of the facility review?
No.
Okay. But you did, I understand, speak with Normal officials?
Yes, I met with them.
Um, also, um, some suggestions were on that checklist to give more detail, maybe even photos to capture each different item. Do you, did you do that during the inspections? Is that something you could add to the?
We, yeah, we have photos. Um, and it just is, know the flavor of what you want. Um, we tried not to make the document cumbersome. I saw Normal's website. It, it's, it's very nice, but this, this isn't what we had decided to do. But if that's, if that's the council's wish, we can certainly add those photos.
Okay. I didn't see the parks on, on the list. It, it, should those be included? I saw like, say Miller Park, Billion, but I didn't see like the whole Miller Park or any other park included in the facility assessment.
Parks really uh wouldn't come under facilities. We were, and you can just walk on the park essentially. We were talking about barriers like doors, um, uh restrooms and things of that nature. So that is what uh the twenty ten ADA plan addresses.
Okay. Um, and then the final thing would be um, uh, would be that it would be better, I think, on the plan to, uh, I think Donna said, have a link to all the facility reviews, but have them all in one. Right now there's like twelve different links you gotta go to for each different facility to look at them. If we could just have them all grouped into one, it'd be easier for people to take a look at that. But I do appreciate your efforts and appreciate you listening to my comments. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'll be quick. I just have two questions. They weren't asked.
Okay, then let's uh, is there um?
I don't want you to leave.
Let's, let's do a motion for extension. And so five minutes?
No more than five.
Okay, no more than five. Okay, let's just do five minutes and then.
Okay, council member Walsh?
Yes.
Council member Bowlin?
Yes.
Council member Montney?
Yes.
Council member Ema?
Yes.
Council member Becker?
Yes.
Council member Urban?
Yes.
Council member Ward?
Aye.
Council member Crable?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, this is so much better than the skeletal plan that existed before. And I really like the grievance piece that, that was added. Um, my question may, may have been somewhere in the documentation and I just, just didn't grab it. Um, if you get a complaint or a grievance from someone who say has, cannot get access to a privately owned building downtown, could they file a grievance with the city? And would there be follow-up in terms of communicating to the business owner or a system of accountability?
Uh, in those instances, we refer them, we refer the individual to the Attorney General's Office in Springfield. Right now, we don't have the jurisdiction for that.
Cause I'm sure there are a lot of places that could be upgraded and that might be an, at, at least another resource or point of information that, that could be provided. And I, there's, there was a lot of reference to the master plan for our sidewalks and that those spaces um and the process of, of making them accessible. Whenever Public Works, and you may not know this, but whenever they evaluate the status of our roads and sidewalks annually and prioritize, you know, which project gets done next. Is there a, an intentional lens of ADA compliance that is considered when prioritizing these projects?
We have not collaborated on that, no.
Okay. So I thought that might be useful. I know there are many rubrics used, but in some cases, um, some of those sidewalks are really hard for folks to navigate in neighborhoods.
It's something for us to think about. Thank you.
If, if I under, if I, can I?
Yes.
One of the things in, in talking to Public Works about how they prioritize doing work on sidewalks, one of the things that they do look at is the condition of the sidewalk and, and part of that is whether or not it's ADA accessible. The other thing I'll say is that as we do roadwork, we also go in and make sure that the adjacent sidewalks are ADA accessible as part of the requirements of the work that they do.
That, that I've seen and I appreciate.
Yeah, once they do the, once, as they identify the roadwork to be done, they also go in and do the ramps and the associated sidewalk work in the area.
Thank you. Um, and just, I support as, as best you can to get the word out because I think that people will truly appreciate and use this resource.
Thank you.
So.
Mayor, can I add one more thing? I'm so sorry.
Sure.
And it goes to council member, one of your questions, council member Crable about, I don't want to put words in your mouth, how we, what items we rated in the checklist. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but that checklist are those things that are required to be checked as part of this type of study, correct?
Right. The checklist is very specific about uh the information that it, that it wants you to gather.
Okay, so there's a list of things that they ask that we, and those are the things that we check. So when you say, when you say it doesn't take someone who's trained in this type of work to do it, it's because the checklist is very specific as to what it's asking for. Is that accurate?
If you just go through the checklist, you'll see what they're asking for in measurements. Uh, is there uh enough room to get a wheelchair into an elevator and to make it turn around to face the door? It tells you exactly what you need to have and you just, uh, just measure it accordingly. The height of the uh, uh wash basin in the restroom, uh, is there room enough that twenty inches to get a wheelchair under there so someone can wash their hands at their wheelchair bound? So it is, it, it is mostly ninety, ninety-nine percent usable with just a uh, a tape measure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing other questions, uh, Michael, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done. I think it is commendable that as a, uh, not only as a, as an organization, but also as a a community, we're committed to uh, uh, to ADA accessibility. Uh, I've traveled quite a bit in a number of different places and I can tell you that the, the commitment is uh different, if there is any at all. Uh, and oftentimes it, it's not even an afterthought, you know, it's just not, people just don't think about it. So this is something that we should all be proud of and uh continue to encourage and, and I'm hoping that uh, you know, Julie mentioned private businesses. I, I'm hoping that this will uh inspire others who may have issues of accessibility to uh, to, to address them. So thank you very much. Um, so there's no vote, so we're gonna move on to um, item B on the regular agenda. And a presentation and proposed uses for a five hundred thousand dollar State of Illinois Violence Prevention Grant as requested by the Administration Department and the Police Department. And we should thank uh, I believe, uh, you know, D C O for uh making this grant available to us. So I'm gonna turn to Billy.
Thank you once again, Mayor. We learned last year that funds were being appropriated to the City of Bloomington through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, D C O, to help address and prevent violence. Now it wasn't, they weren't just allocation to the City of Bloomington, but to communities across the state. This happened in the midst of a time where these communities, all of our communities, obviously including our own, were having conversations about how to address violence. That, that isn't something unique to us. Communities across the state were having that conversation. Uh, as part of this program, the city, as you mentioned, would receive five hundred thousand dollars if our application is approved. And the city, as part of that application, must detail how we would plan to use the grant funds, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. The proposal um before you was designed by the Bloomington Police Department in conjunction with other, other staff with a goal of, of balancing the parts of policing that by their very nature have to be reactive with the need to, to be proactive as best we can in, in other areas to try and address some of the contributor, contributing factors to violence and crime. So there, there was a desire to be balanced in the reactive, reactivity, reactions, reactivity, that's a word, I guess, with being proactive. I want to let you know that the, the application process will start immediately if council is in favor of what is being proposed. And one of the big things, and it's important to note, is that the funds must be spent by June thirtieth. So that's a, that's a pretty short window in terms of when the funds must be spent. Um, and finally, just as, as the type and severity of crimes and violence can vary, so too with our response. I mean, this is one of, of what will be multiple tools to, to work to address um crime and violence in our community. So with that, I'll turn things over to Chief Simmington and Assistant Chief Bays and they'll talk more about what's being proposed.
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy City Manager, um, to the council and Mayor and City Manager. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this grant. Um, please advance to slide two, please. To the next slide, please. In, very good, thank you. So um, as you are aware, we presented the Bloomington Police Department's strategic plan to you and has, have spoken about it on numerous occasions. When we focused on um our opportunity to research and, and of course, find areas that we can expend the monies that would benefit the safety of, of the community, uh, we honed in on the strategic plan and reducing crime and the fear of crime, um, certainly improving the quality of life in neighborhoods and maintaining advances in law enforcement technology are three of the four that this grant could provide an opportunity for. Next, please. So I will lay out um the various programs that um my staff and I were able to come up with um to expend the monies if approved, um, certainly by a city council and then supported by the State of Illinois. Number one is a youth summer camp, which uh was, is part of our strategic plan, one of the goals. And our school resource, resource officers have stepped in to take um the lead on this, this opportunity. Uh, we feel that this provides an opportunity for us to engage with the community, especially the youth, and provide an outlet for the youth during the summer. Um, this would be a one-week summer camp, um, which uh will be supervised and managed by the police officers and the school resource officers. I myself and my assistant chiefs and, and many in the department would support and participate as well. Um, that engagement will allow us to um provide problem-solving and conflict resolution training, um, discipline, life skill, team building, um exercises and would also include day trips and meals. Uh, we are engaging with a variety of organizations in the community to um bring us to fruition if approved. And that um includes, but is not limited to at this time, Project Oz, the Boys and Girls Club and the Juvenile Justice Commission. Um, the statement, on the mission statement that was put forth by, by that committee is to protect, educate and care for the youth in the community. We feel that there would be significant buy-in and positive outcomes for that particular camp. Another is the tip for one program. Um, we are in the midst of, of releasing that to, for usage to the community later this week. Over two thousand police agencies in the United States uses two and it has been um very good for um community engagement and opening, providing opportunities for those who have information concerning crime, whether it had occurred or is in progress, to provide an anonymous tip to the police department, which we would monitor um to ensure that we have a, a, a response to that. Um, this is a program that's not only proactive, but, but definitely reactive. And um, as we have struggled um in the past year with having community members come forward um in a variety of crimes to, to provide information to us. And a lot of folks are just um afraid to do so. Uh, they're, they're afraid of any ramifications for participating or providing um support to the police department and furthermore, testifying in court um if brought before a judge on a, on a charge. So we feel that this is, is an opportunity to open up um a more um user-friendly anonymous way to provide information to the police department. Next, please. We, we also, in the same breath, would like to provide reward money for crime tips. Um, it is something that we have not been able to do. Crime Stoppers is not, um, is non-existent in McLean County. Um, that organization um is not available to, to. That organization is not available to to do this. Again, this is an opportunity for us to incentivize providing information that's valuable in investigations to the police, particularly. Violent crime, homicides, illegal gun possession, and so forth. This is a reactive opportunity. And then we have the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network. This is a purchase that would pay dividends immediately when it comes to gun offenses. So if we collect ballistic material from a crime scene. We can enter that information into this this network and it would provide rapid results on. Where the gun is has been used in in previous crimes. If we seize the gun, we can certainly expend a round from that gun, put it into the system. And it will also provide high valued evidence that connects that gun to crimes. That not only have occurred in the city of Bloomington, but throughout the state in a rapid fashion. Next, please. Then we have a a two prong proactive gun availability reduction effort. And in doing so, a gun back, I'm sorry, a gun buyback program. Is something that has some measured positive results from throughout the country. But also bringing a gun safe purchase program to the city of Bloomington, allowing residents. In the city to apply to receive funds or receive safes. And I I noted at the bottom that the five year average of guns stolen in this city is approximately thirty eight per year. Of those, twenty percent of the guns that we seize from the streets are also stolen guns. And so this would provide a proactive opportunity for us to encourage the use of safes in residents. Or in the homes of residents that do not have their guns properly locked away. Next, please. Staying with the course of proactive, we would love to purchase two mobile overt public safety trailer cameras. We currently have two and and are utilized and provide a good opportunity for us to deter crime. Violent crime, whether that's at a public gathering in specific hotspots around the city. Totally based on trends. This also allows for us to enhance our current network. And there are policies and procedures in place that protect any. Conservative of privacy with our community residents. Next, please. And then an overt unmanned aerial vehicle, and it's been referred to as a drone. The law, which actually provides a footprint or a blueprint for us to utilize. The technology lawfully, and we will do so. We also are in the midst of creating the proper policy. And we will have a dashboard that is available to the public. So the public knows of the uses of the drone or the UAV. UAVs are allowed for for particular reasons, and we will stay within the the confines of the law. In order to use those appropriately. And I think that's the last slide.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Bowlin?
I yeah, I only have one question. With the camp, will that be annual or just a one time thing?
If you can hear me, yes. So it it is imperative that we get off to a space start. This will be the kickoff to judge how well the camp is received by the youth. And we plan to expand that at. The vision is to have three different age levels, high school, junior high, and elementary school kids. The first year would would be junior high. The the folks on the committee feel that that's the appropriate first step. And then as we go forward into next summer, we hope to be able to expand that by a week or two. Again, depending on the outcome and participation levels of this one.
So the program, it's going to be like over three years or?
Well, the the funding for this grant will only allow for for the first year. And then we would have to determine other avenues and collaborations or budget.
I am very much a fan of, if you're going to implement something like this, which is of great value. It needs to be sustainable. So I would be in favor of sustainability. Which means in the budget.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Montney and then Ward and Urban.
Thank you. I I don't have any questions about any of the items that you presented. I I did want to bring up, though, an item that I've learned a lot about in the last week because it came up a week ago. From one of my, one of my residents, a practical actionable item that I think would benefit. Every area of the community as it relates to both crime reduction, prevention. And also the fear of crime, and that is better lighting in our community. That has become an issue that was brought to my attention very specifically in the last week. Learning that Corn Belt, for example, is about four months lead time just to review. Incoming requests from residents to get their streetlights in working condition again. And then if it's not the light bulb, then it goes back in queue again to wait for the city to attend to other. Aspects that might be causing that streetlight to be out. You know, I I've read a lot about this in the last week and all over the globe. I think, you know, there's consensus that this is something that is simple, actionable. And produces results in terms of deterring crime. So I just bring that up because I think it is an opportunity for us to engage in. Very intentionally as a part of our commitment to public safety. And not just something that we do as a service that we collaborate with the utility companies on. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for this. I I truly appreciate that you putting the effort into to coming up with these projects and these proposals. And taking taking this seriously. We have this opportunity that's been handed to us, and I truly appreciate you. You taking the city's city staff's request seriously. I am curious about something and 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 I'm not sure if you're the ones who can answer this. Or if perhaps the assistant city manager, deputy city manager can can answer this. But I'm curious to know who else besides the police department was approached by city leadership. To come up with proposals.
Understanding your question, who was approached?
Who who is the police department, the only department of the city that came up? That was requested to put forth proposals?
As part of this funding.
For this.
As part of this funding, these this program has. Not on paper been specifically defined, but it's been allocated for the most part to the police departments. And so it was the police department as part of this. What do you mean?
You say it was allocated mostly by whom?
I'm sorry, D C E O in in there providing the funding, it's gone to police departments. That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
But they required that it go to police departments or cities have chosen to give it to police departments.
I don't know that they spelled out who it should go to. Yeah, I'm just saying that is it has gone to police departments. But but to your question, the police department determined the the. The recommendations for how to spend the money.
And what was the reason why none of the other departments were given? Opportunity or direction to make proposals?
Other city departments or throughout the community?
City of Bloomington.
I will say, it it when when the city manager first provided the the information on this grant, he did provide it to all the different departments. I apologize, I was wrong in that. It was ultimately decided that the police department would be the one that would put forth this proposal.
And who decided that?
That's how it ended up, based on the input we got from different departments. I mean, the the that that's where it ended up.
So basically, there weren't any other stakeholders besides the police department who were consulted with ideas for ideas?
Other departments, we did discuss with this this with other departments. Ultimately, the police department's proposal was they it was the most appropriate. It was the most, it was the one that went towards addressing issues of violence. The others weren't, wouldn't have been related to that. So they were the department that provided a recommendation that would address issues of violence.
I I guess, you know, I don't have a problem with most of the the items on the list. They seem like like very interesting, and I've said this to you, they seem like very interesting proposals. It seems like a very limited number of stakeholders who were involved in coming up with this. In terms of of what they might think of. And Councilmember Montney and I don't always agree on a lot of things, but the proposal that you just made. Frankly, is an example of the kind of thing that I'm talking about. Street lighting, I why on earth would the police department think to come up with that? But potentially, Public Works might think of something like that. And so I'm concerned that we had such a narrow. And I'm not trying to to say you guys are narrow, I'm just saying that that we had such a narrow. Group of stakeholders from whom to draw and to offer their wisdom and their ideas and their creativity. I'm also not hearing, and and correct me if I'm wrong, if community, non. Non governmental organizations were were reached out to to come up with ideas. Other communities have done that. We, I don't know if Councilmember Emig was planning on commenting on that, but other communities have reached out. And have spent their money and are spending their money to do just that. We've also had other communities who have spent money intentionally to do the research. To hire academic researchers who can give us the data that we need. That I've I've asked for on things like suicide rates, rates of domestic violence. Juvenile versus adult crime rates, neighborhood crime rates, even where are the streetlights out? Things like that, that could potentially give us a sense of where to spend the money wisely. And and to know that if we are going to spend this five hundred thousand dollars, that we're we're basically spending it on stuff. That that we know is needed and we know will work. Otherwise, it feels like we're kind of throwing something against the wall and seeing what will stick. And hoping that a year from now. When we look to make it sustainable, that it was worth spending the money on. I'd like to know that upfront beforehand, and I I haven't seen very many data. To to demonstrate that. So I'm not against these ideas, hear me out, I'm not against these ideas. I need some data to tell me that the taxpayer money is being spent wisely. Because this ultimately is taxpayer money. It may feel like a grant from the state, but that comes from the taxpayers too. I would like to see us consider spending part of the five hundred thousand dollars on doing the research. As is being done downstate, and I'd like to see us spend more than thirty thousand dollars. Potentially on restorative practices as opposed to responding after the fact.
Actually, I'll I'll comment to some of the stuff that the deputy city manager shared. And what Chief Simmington was tasked to do. I'm I'm going to go back a little bit further because I think it fits in this conversation. You know, loosely based on your council initiative that was brought forward, you know, several months ago. When we got word from Senator Kaler that we had been awarded five hundred thousand dollars along with the town of Normal, an equal amount. We felt we might have an opportunity to loosely tie this to that council initiative. So conversations occurred with regional partners that were ongoing anyway regarding the your council initiative. And felt, do we have an opportunity? We also, as deputy city manager said, this was shared initially with all the different city departments. Not that we were under a rush or, you know, a crunch to. I guess, find a use for all these funds, but we did feel it was appropriate to hand this over to the police department. With very strict instruction that this is not just something to throw away the money. And see if, you know, this lands somewhere, which is one of the reasons that I had Chief Simmington meet with you. You know, to discuss this prior to it being shared with the entire council. Prior to it being discussed and shared with the P S C R B. And then ultimately, in preparation for this council presentation tonight, this is a presentation. You know, if we get a thumbs down on portions of this, we tweak it and we bring it back before we hit send to D C E O. So we're not locked into this, you know, that's the total purpose of this presentation tonight. You know, now I I personally support the presentation and the work that Chief Simmington has brought forward. But I'm just the city manager, you know, if I've got a council that ultimately thinks that this should be done a different way. Well, then we're going to follow the direction of the council. I just felt that that should be added.
Councilmember Urban?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for this presentation. And I actually had multiple questions, but Councilmember Bowlin swiped one, so. You know, well, I'll just keep going with my others. On this, one of the in items here on this presentation was the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network. So is this purchasing this program? Is this something that we are budgeting and paying for on a regular basis? By purchasing this program, it's going to actually save us some tax dollar money in the future?
So we currently do not have that at our fingertips. We collect evidence. We have to send it to the Illinois State Police Lab and get in line to wait for for that to be examined. And then put into NIB and some of our other communities in central Illinois that have a higher level of of violence. Were were awarded this tool to utilize in their communities. And they've seen a lot of tremendous output from the technology, which is ever increasing. The capabilities are, Assistant Chief Bayes was on the phone with the company today. And so we feel that once we have the unit, there there are annual costs to go with it. But and upgrades because it's it's based on software, firmware and so forth. We would then budget for those those items going forward to sustain that. This will also provide a tool for our neighbors and the sheriff's department to utilize as well. So it's something that could be leveraged by by the law enforcement community here in the Bloomington Normal area. To enhance our our capabilities holistically.
So just thank you very much because that's very helpful. Because the the I think I I will continue with Donna Bowlin and her comment about this scaling up. You know, we always want things to be able to scale. So, you know, we look at designing the camp, purchasing the gun safes to provide people to lock their weapons. All of these things appear to me to need a necessity or emotion to scale them up. And so I am a thumbs up for you. Um, and so I am a thumbs up for you and for staff to move forward with this personally. But I also want the caveat that as a councilperson and whoever might replace me later on down the road, that, uh, there's an ability to allow these things to scale up, to improve on these programs, to, uh, make sure that they are in line with things like the ACLU and those guidelines, but just, you know, to continue moving in this direction for the safety and, and, and this pattern. So I don't want to be like, this is totally a thumbs up, yay you, without the recognition that this is probably going to need additional funding in future years. And as a council, we have to kind of think of that as well. To hear that you're going to team with Project Oz, that's a wonderful agency and I'm thrilled that, that you are taking on that partnership. But I'd also like to see the community get involved in scaling these things up for you. Um, so it, you know, fundraising and whatever might be the need for helping this to scale up, if that makes sense. And thank you so much for doing this presentation tonight. It's very exciting for the future of our city.
Mayor, could I make a motion to extend time?
Yes.
I'd move to extend time for 15 minutes.
I'll second.
Okay.
How much did you say?
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen? Okay, all right. Roca?
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Okay, 15 minutes. Next, I do believe, uh, councilmember Crumpler had asked for some questions to be asked. So I'm going to ask city manager to ask those questions.
You did. Uh, I'm, I'm the messenger tonight and appreciate the opportunity. Obviously, Alderman Crumpler was not able to, uh, attend. But, uh, to, uh, I don't think anyone's surprised. He's prepped for the meeting, both presentations, and, uh, wanted me to, uh, share comments and questions to both presentations. But, uh, the last one, uh, very similar questions to his had already been shared. So I'm going to read the script that he's prepared for me. Uh, thanks to Chief Simmington and his staff for bringing this plan before council. I appreciate the emphasis on community safety and more effective policing. The gun buyback program and the summer youth camp are both positive ways to engage residents. I would like to see more of this grant money directed toward community education. For example, could we survey residents to learn their perceptions of gun violence in our community? Number two, can we investigate what other communities in Illinois are doing to help provide educational opportunities for residents to learn alternatives to using violence to solve problems? And number three, and lastly, what existing programs in our schools and communities like conflict resolution or others could be expanded with this grant? Thanks.
So, um, in, in looking and talking to my, my peer chiefs around central Illinois, everyone has a, um, sort of a hodgepodge, um, way of, of going about spending these monies. Um, and please, counsel, with all due respect, there are a variety of, of monies being thrown at violence reduction and they differ tremendously in the amount that is out there in the type of grants that, that have been put forward. With the amount of time that we have to devote, um, to such project, it is imperative that, that we do our best to partner with organizations that, that exist in a community and have those conversations ongoing. We, we, we can't just, um, stop and pivot and hope that a year's worth of work can get done in a matter of a few months, um, in an effort to apply and, uh, be, be awarded the money if, if approved by council. I, just for full transparency, Assistant Chief Bays has worked, um, on this project and put forth ton, a ton of hours, um, and we're not even at an application stage, um, to be, to be frank with you. And we've, we've engaged with other offices within, within city government. We know, um, there, there are an array of, of things in place in this community, which everyone should be proud of, that provides support to not only the police department, but to the community in educating, um, youth and others about violence and the use of violence in the community. Um, there, there are groups and organizations that, for instance, work on conflict resolution. Um, we're at the table with, with them having those discussions. Is that something that the police has engaged in on a, on a, um, regular basis? No, not necessarily, um, because they're not calling upon us to, to engage with them because sometimes, um, you know, the, the anti-police sentiment. But we are, we are aware that that work is being done and the community is, is receiving that, um, through a variety of other organizations. We, we are, um, for instance, at the Boys and Girls Club. We are, um, assisting and, and engaged with Project Oz. We are, um, at Western Avenue Community Center, um, for instance, and, and working with the Juvenile Justice Coalition, um, here in, in McLean County. You know, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Moms Demand Action, um, or, you know, speaking to only a few and, and certainly the NAACP and the Jewel Foundation, we've, we've, um, spoken to as well. So, um, city manager, I hope I'm, I'm, yeah, a- answering some of those questions you had from Alderman Crumpler.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker, Emig, and then Crable.
So, uh, real quick from my side, um, one, I, I really do appreciate what you've put together. Um, I, I did like councilmember Montney's, uh, comment on lighting and, and I have had that comment to me from multiple, um, residents in the city. What I, the other piece I wanted to comment on is just, uh, for awareness. Um, I do sit on the Criminal Justice Committee with you and, and I think not everyone is aware of how much data you guys do get. And you get data that is better than any that I have seen in my career as far as focused data on specific areas like recidivism, reduction of crime, preventing juvenile offenders from becoming offenders as adults. And I'm talking about, you know, this is yourself, Normal, the county, the county health department, the parole board, the people from the jail, um, Dr. Frank Beck and his staff from, um, the University of, or Illinois State. Sorry, I almost said Illinois, biased because I went there. But Dr. Beck's data that he provides you guys and that I know you guys use really does give basis to a lot of the decisions you're making. And, and I really think people need to be aware. Frank Beck is, he, he's a genius when it comes to this kind of data. And the, the department does get all of this data from him. They do collaborate with every organization in the county and beyond to use that data proactively as well. So this isn't just, you know, you guys making a decision on your own. I think people need to understand how much data goes into this. And, um, you know, I, I would just encourage people to realize that, that, and also the comment that was made here of having to spend this by June 30th does dramatically, in today's world of how it, long it takes to spend money and do things, does dramatically limit the options. So it might be a use it or lose it in some cases where you might not get the perfect answer, but you get a good answer that will help us move forward. So I, I understand those two constraints. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig?
Um, yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Um, I've, I've, I would say for me, the, the lighting question, I've had just as many constituents complain about bright lights and, and light pollution as I have folks who are worried about streetlights being in disrepair. So it, it, it almost, uh, illustrates that anytime we try to approach a, a problem, there, there, it's, it's complicated. There are lots, a lot of things to consider and certainly, um, kinder things to do environmentally while also illuminating the environment. Elderwoman Ward referred to, um, some research that, that was released and from Peoria very recently. It's public. There's, um, there was a public radio program, um, in which the city officials, um, had interviewed recipients of the $700,000 in grant funds they received from the same source. And their approach was to have, um, local organizations apply for these funds. Um, and in that rigorous application process, indicate not just sustainability, but rationale for why those methods would work. And, um, and everything from, from mental health programming to something called a peace, Peace Keepers Network, which is essentially a restorative justice model, to the Heart of Illinois Big Brothers and Big Sisters and a program called Cure Violence, which when I dug into more, I found to be really interesting. And Carbondale is spending about $60,000 of these funds on a study aimed at dissecting the causes and patterns associated with, um, gun violence in Carbondale. So I, I, in, in the spirit of this process, I do wonder if there's a way to get a broader series of, um, opportunities. Because when I listen to everything, um, it, it does seem that you, you did a great job of looking at reactive versus proactive. But in the bulk of what was presented, it seemed to be more an emphasis on not getting caught or having an opportunity to apprehend, um, criminals versus not inclined to commit the crime in the first place. And I, I, I can't help but wonder if there isn't a better way of reallocating funds. And I was, I was thinking about Dr. Beck as well, so I'm glad you mentioned him. I'm very impressed with the work he's done. And I, I was wondering, could we allocate some funds to his institute to specifically look at ways? So it, it, it's not, it's not a one and done, but there's actually research that's, that's reliable, that's valid, that comes back, that's locally situated in collaboration with all of the, the levers that you're using for us to, um, allocate these funds. And I know that the funds must be spent. Can they be allocated by June 30th? In, in other words, could we create a mechanism for, we are allocating X number of dollars um, to, uh, I, let's, let's think back to Elderwoman Ward's initiative. And panel some local, um, resources and those who are directly affected by crime in our community as well as those who work with organizations, social, um, welfare programs, what have you, to, to come to some, um, recommendation about how else or in what ways might we parse these funds so that they're more distributed? And not just, um, for bigger and better technology to, to prevent, um, potentially because somebody won't do it if they get caught or catching someone because it gets reported. Um, and I want to see data on that because I believe that you've done research. Where, I, I'm interested, like, what, what are the numbers? I'd like, if you in, in, implement these programs, how do you know they're working? How, how does it really, um, reduce crime significantly? Because the Peoria groups really had to, they, their, their proposals had to come up with a methodology or they wouldn't have been funded. I said a lot. That's what I'm thinking.
Sure. We only have three minutes left. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead and say.
So to answer the question with regards to expended, so the first solicitation of this, when it came out, you know, obviously, I believe this has been available since July 1st. I don't believe we got wind of it until October or November. And then it was whispers and, and, and things coming, but I may be wrong on my July 1. I don't know if there's clarification. I became aware of it towards the end, the end of the year, last couple of months of the year. And then some formality with regards to using it. And the other agencies I've spoken to, they're of the same position. Some agencies only got their paperwork to apply for grants up to like three or four days ago, even now. So I did meet with the assigned state grant coordinator via Zoom meeting. And she, uh, confirmed the money must be expended, i.e. costed, and it's a reimbursement grant. So it would be an expenditure to be reimbursed upon submission for the funds expended. So what that means is that we'll be spending money with the hopes and great anticipation that it would qualify under the grant to be reimbursed after expenditure. The initials, uh, links that they sent out, links to 12 documents on the site, and one of them included a overall description of the grant, which actually said it was good through June of '24, which I was super excited about. Upon that link became dead and then a new link was established and it's now ends June of '23. Has to do with the classification of the grant and how the expenditures. So I was super excited when a partner agency was actually operating under the thought that it was 2024 that we could expend. So we are at a point with six months roughly to procure, uh, whatever process that, that requires as we move forward, uh, get to, meet the proper procurement guidelines within our system, order and hopefully supply chain delays and other orders on tangible goods would not be impactful. I think absolutely the methodology that you're speaking to is obviously the tried and true way of approaching problems, right, from an analytics perspective and develop an appropriate response. Premises and conclusions, right, based on, on data. So with 25 seconds left, I'll, I'll stop it there.
Okay, um, let's see, there's a few people who want to speak some more. So will, can we extend for 10 minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to extend for 10 minutes, please.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second.
Who is the second? Sorry.
Second was councilmember Crable.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney? Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Okay. Some emphatic yeses and ayes. Okay, 10 minutes. That's it. Uh, who's next? Councilmember Crable.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Assistant Chief, for this presentation. Thanks to you and your leadership, uh, in creating, uh, this plan, the second time I've heard of it. Um, I was at the PSCRB meeting. Um, I generally like the, the ideas, uh, that are, that are in the plan. Um, I think they'll most likely work, uh, but you always think about, well, what are, what are the, what are other ideas, right? And would those ideas be better, right, if you compared the two? So I like some of the ideas that, that many of the other council members, um, you know, have, have made and maybe those are things that we could tweak this plan or use other funds potentially receive from the state or otherwise. Um, I just wanted to quickly focus on the, uh, the drone. Uh, and that was what caused me the most concern, just like the ALPR cameras and just privacy, um, issues. Uh, but, you know, in doing some research with information that the chief provided to me today, and, and one of them was a statement from the, uh, Illinois Police Chiefs Association. Basically, right now, under the statute, law enforcement can use drones to photograph accident scenes and crime scenes to search for missing persons and after an emergency is underway, but cannot proactively, proactively observe a community event such as a concert or parade. Is that accurate? Basically, that's what it is right now.
Correct, unless we have a bona fide, um, warning that a potential threat of violence would take place.
Right, right. Um, and then HB 5452 is a bill that you referenced as well as the, uh, Chiefs Association, uh, that could be brought up and that, uh, I think it's based in part on, on the, um, the Highland incident. And if maybe there were something there for, um, that parade, maybe something, maybe it could have been stopped. And, and, and so that's part of the bill, uh, to actually use it for events. That's, I think, the big focus of the change is to use it for events. And then on the drones themselves, uh, you respond, I just want to make sure this is clear. Uh, on the drones, there will be no facial recognition and there'll be no microphones to overhear people's conversation. Is that accurate?
Yes, Alderman Crable, that is correct. We do not have that or intend to acquire that technology.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, um, councilmember Boland, Walsh, and then Montney.
McLean County is pretty much ahead of the curve when it comes to proactive with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council. Dr. Beck actually uses his grad students to do all the research for him. And it's paid for with tax dollars through ISU. If any group does want money, they can apply for the ARP grants also. If not just this $500,000 grant. And I believe maybe not a big part, but a significant part of getting, reducing violent crimes is getting the criminal and the guns off the street. And that's your role. And the 500,000 should be then used for that. That's just my.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the hard work you put into it. And I just have one question on the the work put into it. I'm assuming that the work that you put in to make the determination of where monies could be spent. You looked in some various studies and things like that, that were already at your disposal of things that could be done to have an immediate impact on our local community. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And looking at best practices around the nation, certainly, we we are in touch with our peers, not only locally, but throughout the United States and the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And so drawing some of those best practices into the city of Bloomington to help us with driving down violence, we felt is covered here.
Okay, um, next thing, the 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 software and the hardware that that you have mentioned to be able to, I think it's it's purchased from the state or the state licenses it out and and things like that. That particular software, one of the things you mentioned was the ability to have it would it would help other communities here, local in McLean County, the town of Normal, any of our, you know, the Danvers has its own police force that other we could collaborate with and and share the technology with them to to assist them in finding crime in their communities is because that would also finding crime in another community helps fight crime in our community. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that that is correct. Crime does not know jurisdiction. But I, it's fair to say that this jurisdiction holistically with all of the partners that have been involved are, we're doing a very good job, and that speaks to the level, the low level of violence compared to like cities across the nation and in here in Illinois.
Okay, and and my last question is regarding the 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 gun safe purchases, which just sounds like a fantastic idea to me, that if we could get if small safes or for for handguns or a larger safe for long guns, if someone has them in the home and they don't really truly have a way to secure them, would that would help greatly in keeping guns out of the hands of children who don't always act within the smartest way when they get a handgun or a long gun in their in their hands. Is that something that we would look at a national purchase program? Or is that something that we could leverage some of our local business partners who happen to carry safes that that we could make those purchases locally?
Again, considering the timeline and our procurement rules, we could absolutely pursue a local purchase. It would be a matter of whether that vendor, and I have concerns with regards to whom we go with, were able to fulfill that within the time period to allow for the disbursement of the funds to claim back on the reimbursement. Joint purchasing agreements is one option. You know, ultimately, we we would have a limited source locally for that, various different stores or retailers would sell them. You know, I suspect we're looking for a certain level of quality to actually provide some some deterrence, right? And some, but that that could be open if directed as such, just with the procurement policies and the things in place, it builds in additional times for for buying things.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Motney.
So there's been a lot of conversation about Peoria tonight. I recall previously doing some research about the Don't Shoot Peoria Program, which was geared toward very similar to some of the conversations we've had around gun violence prevention, which then ultimately, I think, after many years of not seeing any positive results from that, kind of morphed into another community-based organization. I think Peoria Community Against Violence. I just bring this up because this is a very finite period of time. It's a relatively small amount of money. I've not seen these other efforts in these other communities produce the desired outcomes and change that was very well intended as those programs were designed. Peoria's homicide rate just a few months ago was referred to as a public health crisis and indicated it it increased 150% I think in about five years. So I just bring that up again to affirm in support of what you've recommended. My last comment is about the issue of drones, which, you know, I think the way you've positioned them, I understand and I'm comfortable with it. I I follow Nextdoor, particularly the postings that residents in all of our neighborhoods across the town put up about property crimes and other crimes, accidents and so forth. And the first post out there is, who on my street has ring doorbells? Who might have video that can help me solve this issue? It is something that while we don't want to be surveilled, when we're crime victims, we hope that somebody has some evidence that would help solve that problem for us. So again, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ward, you have 24 seconds.
Yeah, Assistant Chief Baze, I believe that you said that you didn't get a chance to start on this until about October. City Manager Gleason, I thought I saw you nodding in agreement on that. Is the, can you give some clarification about why? Given that we were aware of these funds like in June or something, May or June?
Yeah, actually, Senator Dave Kayler reached out about that timeframe and said, just want to make the city of Bloomington, Town of Normal, aware that these funds are coming absent a whole lot of detail. And I think it was AC Baze shared that the absence of that detail continued well into the fall, if not early winter.
So you didn't have any kind of list of of proposed ideas before about October?
Correct.
Not back in August?
I mean, no, I mean, we we were waiting for notification on what the the formal rules would be. You know, we had some indication of what these, the funds would likely be used for. Actually, the deputy city manager, the comment about me reaching out to all of my department directors, that's an email in in August or September where I reach out and say, I don't want to assume that, you know, this is just a police department grant. So, but the actual formal, and I see AC Baze anxiously wanting to comment to this, but it did take quite some time.
So there wasn't any brainstorming, any kind of list or anything like that that started back in the summer?
Well, that was earlier related to my conversation or my comments previously about can these unexpected funds be loosely tied to your council initiative? Conversations like that had occurred. I don't know if that's what you're you're getting at, but yes.
I guess what I, what I'm just getting at is, is that the concern is that now we only have six months. You know, we can't turn on a dime. We can't come up with something new now. And yet, we've known about this for at least as long as we've taken to come up with something. I'll move on from that, though. I I'm curious in terms of of the cooperation with other police departments. Some of the programs, the ballistics thing, for example, I'm curious to know, are they proposing to put up any money from their funds? Or are there duplication of efforts? Are you aware of what what other police departments like Normal are are doing or other cities locally, so that there's not a duplication of efforts?
Yes, ma'am. I I have a a listing here. For instance, Springfield Police Department, they're they're receiving $3 million. Shot Spotter, Denyben screening tools, Skywatch cameras, a response trailer, training simulator, Ring Doorbells, firearm sighting system, Decatur. I don't know the exact amount, but they're upgrading their body worn cameras and storage surveillance cameras. They're purch, they're proposing to purchase vehicles, portable hard drives, forensic software, desktop computers to replace computers in the PD. Normal Police Department, our neighboring city, Chief Petrelli had spoke to the the items that he wants for their department surveillance, equipment, drones, rapid response, equipment, training and education technology, protective equipment, officer safety enhancements, 3D scanner, digital evidence upgrades. And then Peoria, 250 million over a three-year period, and they're all broken down. Some are our funds, others are DCO funds. And then there was another grant provided by the state of Illinois for reimagining public safety from the Office of Firearms and Violence Prevention. They're looking at body worn camera replacement, in-car videos, ALPRs, the automatic license plate readers, communication, I'm sorry, community awareness. And as Alderwoman Eme spoke to Cure Violence, Workforce Development, and some other, some other items.
So at least in with the town of Normal, there's some duplication about the drones, for example. And it leaves me wondering if if we couldn't collaborate so that we're not duplicating those efforts. I'll wrap, I know we're over time, and I'll wrap up with this one last comment, then. And that's to say that we came up pretty quickly with an application system to solicit from from community groups how to use the the COVID relief money to solicit for economic and development and and other other programs. I don't see why we couldn't quickly come up with a way of soliciting applications for from community groups for shovel-ready programs that they might have in their back pocket. And if nobody has anything, then great, but it seems like it would be worth reaching out to them and saying, does anybody else have any proposals that they'd like to make?
Thank you. And Chief Baze, you'll get the last word. It sounds like you want to say something.
Alderwoman Ward, I think what you're asking. So the, some of these proposals that we've made were discussed in several meetings from a committee we organized prior to even knowing about these funds. We have, we sat in our Osborne Room, and we had different stakeholders from the department, our Crime Intelligence Analyst Unit. Some of these things came up during those conversations, which far preceded the even the sound or when of these funds. These were proposals. I know the trailer cameras were proposals. I know the Niven system was a proposal. The gun buyback, I don't think made the list that came up after in somewhere, but absolutely at at least two meetings, and I'm thinking more like three of an internal committee trying to address gun violence prior to the funding even became aware to us, if that speaks to what you were asking. So we absolutely had those conversations. We have the photos of our notes and and all of those things from those meetings.
Thanks for your transparency.
Good. Thank you very much for all the work that you've done. I know you've done it under quite a bit of pressure, particularly in terms of time, but definitely something, these are all good things to to consider. I, and and I would also add that, you know, I mean, this is not the end of everything. I think we we do have, annually, we have a budget, you know, that we can use to 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 allocate for different ideas, you know, whether it is these that you you've proposed to, you know, perpetuate them, you know, over time, or other ideas that people might have. So I I don't think this is, this should be the the end of the the conversation. So thank you all very much. Do we, is is this Tim coming back as a as an item on on council, the council meeting, or do we need to just kind of give you a sense of the council today?
Yeah, we were seeking a level of direction.
Yeah.
And our goal would be to, Chief, help me, is there a need to, is this need to be a part of a resolution? Or is it more direction from council in terms of are they supportive of what we're planning to apply for? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, sir, that would be accurate, so so we can advance the application process.
So tonight, right, right now, or a resolution?
There is no resolution required, correct? It is more, we are seeking direction as to whether you, as a council, are supportive of this app, ass applying for what has been proposed.
Okay, alright.
So they can start the application process.
So I'm seeing some nods. Okay. Alright, that sounds like we're.
Yes, so thank you, Jeff. One of the things that Jeff and Scott talked about earlier is that there would need to be a budget amendment at some point in order to approve the spending, so that would be what you would be approving. But you all need some level of direction to know whether or not to move forward with this part of the application process. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, yeah, and it it sounds like we're good with that, then.
Could we go around the the dais and say yes or no?
Sure.
I mean, if.
I would support you going.
Hold on, we usually don't vote.
Yes, you you can't take a formal vote. If if desired, we, you know, we could bring this. You know, it sounds like they there's some consensus that they're hearing, but if it's desired, we could bring this back for a formal vote at at the next meeting, maybe even on Monday.
Personally would like that, a formal vote next week.
I'm not comfortable with saying there's consensus.
And we will, we will return. Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. Next week? Because time is of the essence, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Okay, so I think we're moving on to CD manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe I have four slides, new hires. We have four new, I'm sorry, we have more than this. We have two slides on the new hires. Kyle is new to IT, Ron is, yep, Ron is new to Public Works. Darcy's new to Economic Community Development as an inspector. Mike is new Public Safety Dispatcher. And in fact, on that comment, or on on that topic, you know, I think we all realize that you know, a public safety dispatcher, good ones worth their weight in in gold, to be quite honest. And Darren Wolf is the Communications Manager, works for both Chiefs Eric West and Chief Simmington, and does a great job. Next slide. Angela to fire support staff. James, laborer with solid waste, Steel with solid waste as a laborer. Look at the spelling of that first name. He was destined for, you know, for that job at City. And then Robert is also been hired as a laborer with solid waste. Alright, and this is new in 23, and why I didn't think of this sooner, shame on me. But we're also at committee, the whole going to recognize internal promotions. Katie was promoted to Business Manager in Parks and Recreation. She does an excellent job. She does tremendous work for the Director Eric Beal. And then Clint was promoted to a multi-discipline inspector for ECD. I do know for a fact that the different training and certifications that Clint had to go through in order to achieve that multi-discipline inspector status was quite lengthy, so credit to him. Next slide, please. January 27, 28, so that's in, not this weekend, but next. Animal Crackers Education Classes at the Miller Park Zoo. Next slide. Bloomington Parks and Rec Winter Spring Events, that magazine is out, can also be found at Bloomington Parks, parks.org. And I think that's it. Alright, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And at this point, we will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Councilmember Bolin, is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Becker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.